Item number three is Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest. Does any councillor see anything in the foreseeable future? If not, if something comes up or arises, please make note. Item number four, Presentations, 4.1, Yarmouth Seafood and Wine Extravaganza. Joanne is the co-chair of the committee, and I see you have Kim Neon. If two of you would like to come down front and sit here. And just hit that red bar on the microphone and all. If you want to pull the mic a little closer to you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
And thank you so much for having us here this fabulous sunny morning.
Yes, it is.
Extravaganza is evolving, and we're really excited about presenting these updates because we think that it's going to be an amazing, long-term kind of movement that is going to be very successful. We're still working on the title, so, excuse me, I think that we're going to maybe call it Aster Splash, or Skies and Stars, we're working on that. Whatever Extravaganza name evolves to, we're celebrating the UNESCO Biosphere, and it has the potential to bring significant economic growth to southwest Nova, showcasing our heritage, goods, service, hospitality, tourism experiences while exchanging and learning from our international guests from hidden fishing villages around the world. Extravaganza has been in existence for seven years. I don't know how many of you have attended it, but, you know, it's been building each season, and it's been a very good local event with some draw from outside, but we felt that by adding an international element, we will create a lot more spin, a lot more diverse So we want to create an event that is simply not to be missed. We've engaged media and advertising, and we're hoping that that will invite the people from the ferry, the tourists, to come in and enjoy southwest Nova Scotia, particularly Yarmouth and municipality, and Argyle, as a group to showcase what beautiful area it is. Our networking with Bay Fairies and Jake's, which is this time we're bringing a fishing village called Treasure Beach from Jamaica. So Jake's is a hotel in Treasure Beach. They're going to be partnering with us. So that would broaden our draw for people from northeast USA, Europe, Nova Scotia, Quebec, as well as southwest Nova. People of all ages and interests will find something to join us with. So last year, I attached some pictures, Liz was kind enough to attach some pictures. I don't know if all of you have been to the Extravaganza and the different events, but last year, 3,000 people attended, which is great. And we estimate between people that were here, that came from locally, and some people that were from away, 3,000 people times $200 brings us around $600,000 of activity from the previous situation. So our new plan is to have three days based on Extravaganza with three events in August and three days in September, which is our international event. So by having these two showcases, we have doubled the activity, hopefully doubled the draw. So we're thinking in the second year, we could, the first year of this kind of update, we would have 6,000 people, double the activity because we have doubled the events, at $300, which would give us 1.8 million. And we're going to, as I said, showcase this fishing village in Jamaica. The second year, we're looking to bring another village from Italy. And the third year, we're going to bring another fishing village from South Africa. Fourth year, another village from France. So I put down numbers there to show kind of how we kind of drill down the numbers and anticipate things to grow. I think that there will be a big impact on the economy and room nights, and we just get to showcase this amazing area. And I think by powering up with the synergy of other like fishing villages around the world, it just creates an opportunity for all of us to grow. So if we look at August, August is usually when Extravaganza was working. So we're building on Extravaganza base, the communities are featured, community charities and things, and we're going to also plant some seeds foreshadowing the September events. So Friday is Surf or Turf Dinner and Music on the Waterfront, and we'll also feature some Jamaican music, a little bit of Jamaican hot sauces or whatever in the cuisine to kind of, again, foreshadow the September events. Saturday will be the Seafood Splash on the waterfront. That was previously called the Fish Fiesta, and that's celebrating seafood dishes with a twist of Jamaican Acadian music with a twist. This is 10 to 12 community organizations serving seafood. It's Nights of Columbus, I think, is there, and, you know, various people that, community organizations. And Sunday is Extravaganza, which has always been the highlight at the Grand Hotel, and it's wonderful that the Grand Hotel is now renovated, and it's going to be even more beautiful. So from six to eight, we're going to showcase wineries, seafood, local distilleries. And then we've added an event onboard the cat between nine and 12, cocktails and dancing with music. So we're really excited about that. So that kind of gives us August. And then September, I kind of talked a little bit about, we're forecasting to do Jamaica, it's all organized. So our Jamaican guests are three chefs. We're bringing three chefs from Treasure Beach, a hotelier, Jason and Sally Hensler, and a couple of other people from the Treasure Beach Tourism Board. Appleton Estates Rum Representative is coming, I don't know if you've heard of Appleton Rum, but it's quite a good rum. Some musicians are coming, some artists are coming, and Sally was kind enough to offer a film for us as well. So we have all these wonderful, new things to ramp up and put into our September events. So Friday, we're going to have an opening ceremony on the cat, and we've organized the two cat events already with Monica at Bay Fairies. We're going to open with historical vignettes about Nova Scotia and Jamaica. Little things are so funny that are in common, they're both fishing villages, as I said, but I never knew that Jamaicans helped to build the Citadel and Governor House. So, you know, when you dig down and you drill down into common things, there's always some surprises, but anyway, we're going to show humorous little highlights, like maybe something about Lawrence Sweeney and prohibition, and something about Jamaica, and we're going to have Zach there, and, you know, people from government. We also envision making a showcase of the towns along the shores, so that then we power up and we create something where the tourists from the ferry can walk this event and visit Shelburne people, and visit Chester, and visit Digby, and see people from Clare, and see people from the municipality or Pubblico, and just talk to them about their towns and plan their vacation. Not around a guidebook, but around conversations. So I think that it will be a really interesting thing for tourists. And we'll have musicians, Acadian, Mikmaa, and Jamaican reggae, what a combo. And we also envisioned elders storytelling, some Indians, and also some fishermen talking to fishermen from Jamaica, fishermen from Pubblico or the bar or whatever, could have a little chat, and some drinks, some munchies. So the second event we're envisioning is at Le Village, we're working on that, and it's going to showcase food, we all love food. We're calling it La Cuisine Acadian and Cook Shop 101. Cook shops are restaurants in Jamaica. So we're going to feature Acadian dishes, First Nation dishes, and Jamaican cuisine. Cook shops from Jamaica, Hatfield Host Digby Pines, and new Master Chef Alice LeBlanc.
Contestant, yeah.
Yes, contestant, yeah. And other chefs from local restaurants. We're going to make little mini cooking classes, so between five and 20-minute classes on how to make fish tea, how to make Acadian fish chowder, how to make a rapid pie with a Jamaican twist. We're really excited about sharing that because it's going to be very, it's an experience where people can share stories and laughter and recipes, and it's going to be a lot of fun. And then we're going to do sky gazing with the expert from Quinian, and enjoying nature, and then followed by a bonfire. And Sunday, we're going to showcase, I'm very fond of, because I live at Cape Frisbee, Cape Frisbee Nature Trail and a beach party. So we're going to do Leaf Erickson Trail, which is just gorgeous, with somebody talking about the wildlife and the nature there. And we're going to do a lighthouse tour, serve some Jamaican high mountain coffee and some muffins. And then around four o'clock, we're going to do a beach party. And I think, you know, we have so many beautiful things in celebrating and enjoying the outdoors and creating that kind of synergy where we showcase these, I mean, it's just outstanding the beauty in this area. And at nine o'clock, we're going to do the film premiere and reception. The film is created by the late Perry Hansel. He's the most accredited Jamaican film festival, filmmaker, pardon me. And he produced a film called The Heart of the King, which is brought reggae to the world. And he did another film, but it didn't get released, so his family's put it together, and they have kindly volunteered to allow us to do a premiere here with this film. So in creating these three events and showcasing Fishing Village in Jamaica and our wonderful area and the fishing villages we have here, I think we bring to the tourists or the locals an amazing couple of days of fun and celebrating the area. September 9th, for ticket recipients that have bought a whole package, or for some of the people that worked on the committee, and some, I'm not sure what Carol's ideas about who exactly gets to go to this Golden Ticket, but it's going to be at the Tuscan Islands, and a private cooking class and food tasting, astrourism from a different location. So that's our final piece. And that completes our kind of events within Yarmouth and Yarmouth area. Did I forget anything, or you think we're, okay. And October, we're going to, in Treasure Beach, have almost the same events. So they're going to have a fishing tournament, that we're going to bring guests from Yarmouth, three chefs are coming from Yarmouth to Treasure Beach, wineries and distilleries, so we're going to bring Nova Scotia wineries and some gin companies or whatever, musicians and artists, and we're going to have something there. But, you know, the prime reason we're here to talk about this today is really about the festivals that we're going to have here. And I don't know if I've explained it exactly right, that this one is going to be Jamaica, and we feature Jamaica. The second year will be Jamaica and Italy. So we're going to add Italy into the mix. There's a fishing village called Chivatunova, which is on the Adriatic coast. I already have the chefs lined up and et cetera, et cetera, wineries lined up. So I think that, you know, in the next year, France, we're going to invite some fishing village on the Atlantic coast of France, near Bordeaux. So this is our vision of powering up hidden gems.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from councillors at this time pertaining, councillor Cushion?
Yes, it sounds like you have a very ambitious agenda there. I hope you've got lots of volunteers to help you out in this, in these projects.
We do.
It sounds, it sounds pretty exciting, and it certainly is going to bring some people who may have not been to the Yarmouth area to us.
Indeed.
You know, and certainly take advantage of the lighthouses, it's there, it's the Leaf Erickson Trail is a great place, you know, the whole area is just wonderful. So, you know, congratulations, and I hope everything works out good for you.
Well, I really believe if we all participate, and I really say this, I mean, Carol has done a great job, Extravaganza has been amazing, and seven years of pulling it together, but I think with this international element, everyone's interested in hidden gems. And Jake's has this hotel in Treasure Beach. They, it's a little town of 6,000 people, it's a fishing village. They have a hotel there with 40 rooms, and they charge $375 US, and it's full all the time. So we envision within the events, we will have some showcases where hoteliers here are able to have a workshop with them, and listen to their ideas and how they've, you know, done things. Sally and Jason are amazing people. If you get a chance to look at, they have a YouTube, a little four-minute thing called Jake's Hotel, Treasure Beach, Jamaica. But, I mean, they're all about fishing and sustainability and food table, and so, and the fishermen that are coming, and the artists, the musicians that are coming, I think it will just, you know, really bring something that the, all these wonderful people on that ferry get off that ferry, and they go directly to Halifax because they don't know that there's anything to stop here for. But if we have that running video, the Bay Fairies is going to run the video from April on the Digby ferry, and I think from June on the Yarmouth ferry, they're going to have that running. Of course, Yaz is going to put us on the website, and we have a website, and you have a website, and word of mouth, we're going to really empower it with people inviting people.
It's a great opportunity to, I say, to promote our area, but also to expand what you've done in the past, to expand. It's always good to, for a group to expand and to learn more, and to, and just to make things that much better. That's a good job.
Well, thank you. And like I said, to get this one off the ground with Jamaica is paramount, because once we get going, it's just going to build like a snowball. I mean, my boss is the Vice President of the Italian Trade Commission, I worked in shoes in Italy, and she was all upset with me that we are doing Jamaica first, she wanted us to do Italy first, but Jamaica fell in place. I was just swimming with Sally, and she said, you know, we should do something together. And we pulled this together, Carol was in Jamaica with me, and I think that it's just the positive energy and the people, it's all about people making it happen. So they're all in, they're bringing their people, and, you know, I think it's just going to, like I said, really build up momentum.
Councillor Durkey, go ahead.
Thank you, Joanne and Kim, this is very exciting. Any idea of price for tickets to some of these events?
Well, Carol, forgive me for not being plugged into every little bit. In, I think the Extravaganza was $55, if I'm, something in that range. So I think that the August events will be similar to what they were, Surf and Turf was, do you know what it was?
No, I'm not sure, but that was, I know that Carol had said that, should we want to keep it fairly low, you know, not low, but cost down, so we can have more people come?
Yeah.
We don't want to put it too high, so it's going to just be, you know, smaller than Digby and Portugal. So we're going to really look at the price, keep a reasonable.
And I, we envision, we're going to make this card with bracelets that are made of ribbon, and on the card will have all the events, the six events listed, with a little kind of holder for the ribbons. So it will say VON and the date, and seafood splash, and then Extravaganza. And I think we're going to offer some kind of discount. If you go to three events, you get 10% off. If you go to six events, you might get 20% off. And I think the, this event in Tuscan Islands is if you buy all events, you get to go to the Tuscan Island. But it's still evolving, we're still, you know, kind of pulling together the last few details.
And I also want you to keep in mind, I know Lauren, you'll appreciate this, that we have an international airport.
Oh, don't I know that.
And, and so if people are looking maybe to charter a flight from Jamaica, they can still land at our airport, and vice versa.
Girlfriend, I looked into it, it's, going back, I thought to myself, well, if we get 50 people from Yarmouth, we could fly directly to Treasure Beach. But it's a little, I think we have to buy all of us a few lottery tickets to do that, but.
But you never know for people, if you get a group coming from Jamaica that are willing to spend the money.
Yes.
I'm sure there's some, you know, organizer, flight services that might be willing to do a deal.
Yeah, girlfriend, I, you know, I have to, Mitch kind of looked into a little bit about that, because he's a person that flies, and indeed, I think it's, I wish the airport was, I mean, I fly all the time, and oh goodness, I wish that airport was working. But we, you know, if we, if we get enough people in here, if we get, look at my four year, 10,000 people, well, we'll have to be looking at more hotels, my husband sent to me, and Neil pointed out to me, there's not enough places to stay. I said, well, if we have that problem, we'll just, we'll solve that problem.
Good luck, that's great.
Was there any further questions from councillor at this time? Karen, now I only have one, you are looking at a three-year project.
Well, Extravaganza's gone for seven years, and I put four years together because I just thought that it gives a forecast of, that we've got a plan in place for these four years. In my head, this should be like Celtic Colors or like Deval, there's no, we can't have an amazing festival here that powers up like those do.
Okay, that caliber, okay. Go ahead, Victoria.
So just to be clear, though, the request that's before council is for this year only, so $5,500 is a one-year request, that's not for over four years. I just want to be sure council's clear.
No, 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 for sure.
Great.
Actually, it's an odd request, because Carol has always done Extravaganza for three days. Note that we're now doing six days, and we're envisioning that we're going to have the power to bring twice as many people, have twice as many events, we have twice as many costs. So it's not quite the same request as last year, because it's not quite the same event as last year. We leave it with you to digest and do the best you can for us, because truly, this year is paramount for us to get off the ground properly. And, you know, it's not just about money, it's also about all of you getting people to come. I can't tell you how many people, when I've been working on this, who have said to me, I never have been to Extravaganza. How many of you have been to Extravaganza? Okay, see? So there's work to be done on just, you know, local people. If everyone here says they're going to come, that's going to make me do a Snoopy dance, because for me, you come, you bring your friends, there's a spin, it brings other people. It's not just about people from away, the positive energy from our community. Like, I live here, I stay here, but my friends in New York think, why do you live, where is this place? It's about the people, you know? So really, everybody participating is even as important as money.
Was there anything further? Okay, at this time, Joanne, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for taking the time, and your consideration is really appreciated.
Yes.
I'm really excited.
Yes, I've always, I've always enjoyed both on the waterfront and at the Grand and so on, it's been good. I was on the original committee way back when it first started.
Woo-hoo.
And so on. And I do try to go to the meetings, but your time scheduling for your meetings and mine just don't mesh all the time. But I did go through your board of directors and so on, and see you have some very prominent business people sitting there and so on, so.
Well, we're, again, by the September events, we are involving Pubblico, we're involving the lighthouse, which hasn't happened before, it's been a Yarmouth-based festival, and I think that by engaging more of the community.
Yes, it's important.
It's going to create a lot more positive energy. Thank you.
On that note, thank you very much.
Have a wonderful day.
Yes, thank you, Joanne. 4.2, Nova Scotia Music Week, Neil? The chair is warm, Neil, so sit down, and the mic is on.
Like it's hot. Does everyone have a copy of this, or should I distribute?
I have it here in my computer, sorry. Don't? Well, I guess I need a copy. I think I've already seen it.
So I'll be conscious of your time, I realize you have probably a large agenda, I'll try to keep this within 10 minutes if possible. Feel free to interrupt me at any time, I won't take offense, and I'll try to get through this and get to the basics and allow you to make an educated decision on this event. So, thanks for letting me present today. I'm here to talk to you about a proposal for Yarmouth and Acadian shores to present a bid for the next three years of Nova Scotia Music Week. Nova Scotia Music Week, the bids that we're trying to bid on here are for 2020, 2021, and 2022. So Music Nova Scotia is committed to ensuring the growth of our music sector through education, training, communication, promotion, and artist recognition. Nova Scotia Music offers members these services in the increasingly competitive and ever-changing music industry. The flagship of these events is Nova Scotia Music Week, or NSMW. It's the focal point each year for members of the industry. Nova Scotia Music Week provides professional development, showcasing opportunities, and an opportunity to heighten awareness and increase exposure and audience appreciation for the Nova Scotia music industry experience story in the host community. Nova Scotia Music Week is an annual celebration that brings music fans, musicians, high-profile music industry professionals, and media together for four days of industry and public-accessed events. Each year, Nova Scotia Music Week includes a public music festival, a professional development conference, an international music buyers program, and the Music Nova Scotia Awards celebration. While some of the events are specific to the music industry, all components of Nova Scotia Music Week are open to the public. Anyone can purchase a delegate pass, or just buy tickets for individual events, and all the events are open to the public. Nova Scotia Music Week is a wonderful test Nova Scotia Music Week is a wonderful testimony to how a public music festival and a business-to-business industry conference can blend. Those showcasing, the showcasing festival and concert components are aimed at presenting the talents of Nova Scotia artists to the public and industry professionals. While the awards, presentations, and celebration of the achievement of the, and provide heightened public recognition. Conference topics range from presenting core industry know-how to exploring current and emerging issues facing the music industry, along with potential approaches to end solutions. So that's kind of a high-level description of what Nova Scotia Music Week is. I think some of you probably have participated in Music Week or have been here when we've actually hosted it before. We hosted the event in two thousand ten, eleven, and twelve, and also in two thousand fifteen. So anecdotally, the event is very, it's a really great event for the community. It gets a lot of, it gets Yarmouth and Acadian Shores on the map. We get a lot of public relations results from it. And there's a real impact to the community economic-wise, economically speaking, for the event here. Certainly, our hotels will be full, all our Airbnbs will be full, all our BnBs will be full. The room night level that Truro is currently experiencing is around five hundred room nights. And that's approximately for four days. So the, the impact to Music Week coming to the region is significant. That's just hotel rooms. Then if we talk about the multipliers for all those people that are staying, talking about food, food and beverage, gas, all the other things that they spend money on. Plus, plus the locals very much participate in this event because it's a, it's just fantastic. For those of you that haven't experienced it, most of you, if you have, you realize you don't sleep much for those four days. You basically are quite tired. But because the shows go, once they start, they go to about two or three in the morning and every day. So it's, it's just great. There is a real, again, I mentioned the economic impact. Some of the, some of the things we've, we've looked at before, this event has been studied. There's actually been an economic impact assessment done in, it was commissioned in two thousand ten and it was delivered in two thousand eleven for Yarmouth and Acadian Shores. The last time it was here in two thousand ten, there was a study done. And there is, I can provide that information to you if it's not already part of the package. But that study clearly shows that there's a really great return on investment for, for municipal investment into the event. And there's a huge economic impact for having the event in the community. And multiple years would mean multiple levels of impact. Just a couple snippets from the, to kind of express the economic impact here would be that, just I want to read a few of these to you. Nova Scotia Music Week in two thousand seventeen, Truro resulted in one point five million in direct spending in the host community. This is from the Nova Scotia Music Week AGM report. The typical visitor's party spend was twelve hundred ninety-five dollars or four hundred and forty-three dollars per person. In total, spending in Yarmouth County by out-of-town visitors during the Nova Scotia Music Week was three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So this is for the two thousand, these are two thousand and ten numbers as well. So I expect that these would be slightly higher by now. The typical visitor to Yarmouth County indicated that they spend an average of three point five nights on their trip to Nova Scotia Music Week, which is excellent. The crew and artists often come in a couple of days before to get things set up. So there was, it's not just for three days. And in two thousand ten, Nova Scotia Music Week provided a significant economic impact to Yarmouth County. The combined operations and visitor expenditures directly associated with the events totaled five hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And this is through, this was again, through that same study, which I can, make sure I can forward to Liz if you haven't already had it. So I didn't forward that to you earlier, so. So there is a significant cost to hosting the event. Part of Nova Scotia Music Week, how they, how they move the event around the province is they, they require host committees or host communities to, to pay hosting fees, licensing fees. So they license the event. It is a bit of a cookie cutter event. So once, once the event is, once the host community is chosen, Nova Scotia Music Week comes into town with their team, with their equipment. They often hire locals and they have to hire local, like, equipment providers, audio and, audio and video providers. They'll actually have, we have a, a large requirement for volunteers that we'll have to come up with. But the event is very much templated and runs very much on its own. So it's not something that we have to invent. We just have to kind of tick the boxes to make sure the event goes well. So things like sponsorship, events, venues, et cetera. Once we have all those in place, Music Week really comes in town and they know how to run the event and it's, it's fantastic. But there is, is a cost related to the hosting it. There's, there's thirty thousand dollars in licensing fees and there's twenty thousand dollars in, in-kind costs. So dealing with the licensing fees first, that's just simply, if we want to host the event and want to be chosen for the event, we have to prepare a bid. And part of that bid has to be that we provide evidence that we are going to have the means to fund thirty thousand dollars for the event. So what I've done as YASTA, because YASTA is putting in the bid and we have four partners, one of them is obviously the municipality of the District of Yarmouth. I've taken the thirty thousand, or actually the, the thirty thousand in cash and twenty thousand in kind, and I've divided it up. And I've requested ten thousand dollars from each partner. So the Marketing and Promotions Levy Advisory Committee, which is a partner of YASTA, has agreed to ten thousand dollars commitment for the event. The town of Yarmouth has agreed to provide ten thousand dollars. I've presented to the municipality of District of Argyle. They're still deliberating, but I haven't heard back yet, but I expect to hear soon. And I'm presenting to you today, making the same request of ten thousand dollars. The Hotel Association in Yarmouth has also made a commitment to provide up to seventy complimentary room nights, which is a significant cost, about ninety-one hundred dollars. That goes against the in-kind cost, the twenty thousand dollars. Other things that can go against the in-kind costs are things like transportation or providing rental fees for municipally-owned facilities. So for example, the Mariner Center. If we were to comp as a, as a organization, if you were to comp a piece of that cost for Music Week to operate the event at the Mariner Center, that would go against the twenty thousand. So there's really thirty thousand in cash, twenty thousand in kind. But the in-kind is pretty much taken care of. It's the, it's the cash that we have to come up with. And I've requested that amount from each, each partner. And so far, I have an answer on two. And again, the, it's a, it's a substantial amount of money for, to host an event. But again, the, the economic impact is clear. There is a return on investment. It's not always easy to measure events because we, we know when we're walking around the street and there's a large event happening or a conference in town, we know that stores are full, people are busy, but it's hard to measure it. But in this case, we have actual metrics showing the impact of these events. And so I'm, feel confident in, in requesting that money from the municipality, which I know is significant, but I feel is, is worth that investment because of the economic impact related to it.
Any questions from councillors? Counselor Cushing, go ahead.
Thank you, Neil. Again, I, I just, I just, just want to comment. We, we've just had two presentations that are looking at three-year projects to promote the Yarmouth and surrounding areas. I mean, that, I think that is just fantastic way to, to start promoting ourselves. You know, you hear on the street, say, well, there's nothing to do in Yarmouth, there's nothing to do in Yarmouth. Well, here's, here's two presentations that we've had that are really want to promote our area. And I think, I think that's a great idea. My only question is, I, I, really quickly, but you're looking for ten thousand dollars once or ten thousand dollars per year?
The, it would be, if we were successful in bidding, I'll be bidding on all three years. The last time we bid in two thousand fifteen, we bid on three years as well, but we were only successful in one. So the requirement for the hosting fee was only required for that one year. If we were successful enough to get all three, which would be, that would be over the moon, there would be hosting fees required for each year, correct? The first year that hosting fees would be required would be two thousand twenty. That would be the earliest we would get this event. If we bid on this event, which is due on the fifteenth of May, if we bid on it and we're successful, we'll find out in, we'll find out this fall, that we would have it for the following two thousand twenty fall. So your funding wouldn't be required until, obviously, the bid was won and it wouldn't be required until two thousand twenty. So I would leave that up to your budgeting team, but you wouldn't have to budget for that this year, certainly. Or you could budget a portion of it this year and a portion of it next year. But you are correct, Counselor Cushing, that if we were successful in winning it multiple years, the hosting fees would be required each year. Another thing I wanted to mention too, is that the Hotel Association has also, in an effort to make our bid as attractive as possible, because we are competing with other destinations in Nova Scotia. I think Truro is certainly bidding on this again. Truro's had great success and the event's growing in that, in that area. We're putting some mechanisms in the bid, which I don't want to, want to say publicly, but I could share with you at some other point, just because I don't want to, I don't want other destinations to actually know some of the things we're doing. To really make our bid competitive. And a lot of that is actually have, is the Hotel Association really going the extra mile with regards to the cost for rooms and, and other things that I can't really talk about. But they're trying really hard, where we're going to really try to put in a competitive bid. And they're, they're putting lots of money on the table.
Counselor Allen, you have the floor.
Thanks, Neil. Well, you kind of answered some of my questions through Counselor Cushing. So you, the bidding process, is it, does it, is it run like every three years? They award every three years and then three years later, they, you bid again?
Right.
It's not, it's not every year?
Sometimes, well, so last time in my, we bid, YASTA bid on it last time. And when we did, I remember, we bid on all three. They, they awarded us the two thousand fifteen bid, but they wouldn't tell us who they were going to for the last two, the next two years. So we kept asking them and asking them, and then eventually they said, we're choosing Truro for the next two years.
Okay.
So it may be a situation where we'll put in a bid for three, we get one of those three years. We maybe have two, we maybe have three, you know? I'm certainly trying to put in as strong a bid as possible and putting in motivators in the bid, that, that there's a real motivation for them to choose our destination for more than one year. But we'll see, maybe other destinations are doing the same thing.
Because it seems to me that when we had this last time, the town was definitely buzzing.
Yep.
It was, it was going.
Oh, yeah. It's very much, it is town-centric because, I mean, that's one of the assets that the town has currently for this event specifically, is that when they do, with regards to venues, they want venues that are, if possible, walkable. So this would be, there would be two venues at the Grand Hotel, one at Dooley's, the Ark would be a venue. Certainly, we're trying to now, with the growth of, you know, craft breweries and other things, we're hoping to utilize those places as venues as well. But other things that we're able to do, because, you know, we're, we're bidding on this event based on the, the things that we have. So we have Acadian culture, we have music, we have astrotourism. So these are the things we're trying to put in the bid as motivators, why they should choose our location. So some other venues that I'm also pitching to them, they have the final say on the, on the venues, but I'm pitching them that they should consider things like the Penrose Theater in, in Tuscan. And also the brewery in Tuscan or the coffee shop that's just gone up in Tuscan. These are places that we could, that are close enough to town that we could accommodate with transportation, but would, we want to push the, the event out as much as possible.
I guess that was my other question, like, would there be any venues out in the municipality at all?
I thought that, I expected that question, it's a fair question. I thought that I probably would be able to utilize some kind of a, a show, probably at Cape for Shoe, if we were to do it right. An intimate kind of a, because some of them aren't just all large rock concerts. Some of them may be just a singer-songwriter, you know, doing an afternoon. So I could see something like Cape for Shoe being a, you know, the venue out there being an opportunity to do something like that.
All right.
I intended on pitching that. But again, they have the final say, but it's all about how we sell it.
Okay, thanks, Neil.
Yeah.
Deputy Warden Cunningham.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Neil, as you know, I'm former chair of YASTA and anything that I can do to help make this event a reality, I certainly would. And one thing that I should be noted here, that Nova Scotia Music Week is, is held in the November, so in the shoulder season. So it's not held during the hustle and bustle of usual summertime activities. And that's one thing that I really like about this, because it, like I said, it's a buffer. It's a buffer area.
Right.
So I just wanted to point that out.
We, just to build on that, we, YASTA is part of our destination management plan and certainly in tourism now, certainly with tie-ins. And everyone in the province is speaking and talking seasonality or season extension. So when, and I've shared a lot of these concepts with CIO, that when we look at events or look at experiences or look at anything, we're trying to really push, not that we don't, don't want things in the summer, but we have summer. We have occupancy in the summer. We're trying to push things into the fall or into the spring. So, and it, sometimes it just takes a conversation. I, I'm currently working with the Mutual Aid Society to, we may be bidding on a, on the Fire Chiefs Conference. And that's usually held in July. And, you know, at the first meeting, I said, hey, would you consider moving the event to September or June? And, you know, they were like, well, we'll, we'll consider June, sure. So often, it's just a conversation to try to be more strategic about where we find events. But this event is nested in a time period in November, when occupancy is low, when hotels are dying for visitors, dying for guests. So this event really helps make the year, make November. I'll, I'll be quiet in one second, but the, the, we just had our fisheries, the Fisheries Conference that was in January last year, or in this, this year, in two thousand nineteen. So we're up ten percent for the year already, for January and February, highest increase in the province so far. And a lot of that is because of that conference, you know? Because, because of that being in January, when our occupancy would be very low, we have a conference that requires, generates the room night traffic and generates all the other benefits of it. So it's, it's important to be strategic. So I didn't really mention that, but that's one of the really great benefits of this event is that it happens in November.
Okay. Counselor Cushing, come ahead.
I just had a, an idea, a thought when Counselor Allen mentioned about your expanding out into different communities. Some of these workshops that you have, like the music, the songwriting workshop, have you ever thought about hosting them into smaller community halls sort of thing like this? That may only attract a few people, but it'll get them expanded out and to.
Again, I can make recommendations on, on the artists. I, I don't recommend this, there's no, we have no artist input at all. That's an application process. But we have, we have some input on, on venues. So, and I'll be recommending a lot of venues. They'll, they'll whittle it down and determine which ones they want to pick. But there may be a situation where a community hall may be appropriate for the type of music or the, or the artist. They like to try to align things, you know? We're, we're working with Acadian First Nations as well. They're going to be a partner in this process. They've, they're supporting the bid. Certainly with the new hotel development that's there, they're, they see this is obviously because of its time that it's landing in November, it's really important to support events like this. But tourism, or sorry, Music Nova Scotia wants to have indigenous performances. They want to have indigenous artists and content. So we've recommended those venues and they've been supportive of that. But we'll see if they can find artists that will fit within that venue, so.
Good job. Do you have any questions? Just to, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Deputy Warden again, go ahead.
All right, this is real quick. One, one thing that I was thinking of as well is maybe out in community halls like, like Pembroke. Fire halls, I could certainly clear out the Carlton Fire Hall with all the fire trucks and that venue there could handle easily a hundred people.
Right.
A little more intimate thing. So that was also something else. Try to spread it around the different communities, even Lake Vaughan, which would also tie into the municipality of Argyle, up in Port Maitland, that could pull people from Claire. So that's what I was more or less thinking. It's something to think about, not suggesting that we do it. But of course, Nova Scotia Music Week and YASTA could certainly figure out the logistics or something like that.
Counselor Durkey.
Thanks, Neil. I'm, as you already know, I'm a hundred percent supportive of this event and, and the bids. I have attended Nova Scotia Music Week quite a number of years ago, actually came from Toronto specifically for it. And it is a fabulous event. And so I, I wish you good luck on the bid.
Thanks.
I have just a couple of quick, Neil, if I remember right, back in two thousand ten, you were a councillor with the municipality, or with the town of Yarmouth.
Yep.
And this came about in, in, to this area. And I can remember a lot of local organizations came together to pull it off. And the artists and the participants, I can, because I, I was involved, that they were overwhelmed with the hospitality that Yarmouth shone. And so in two thousand fifteen, when they were back again, they really enjoyed the hospitality. So I know in, in, in two thousand twenty, and I always think positive, that you have it and hopefully you, we can have it for the three years, that the hospitality is still there. And the organizations for support is, you just garnish some of it here, eh? They're willing, willing to give you all kinds of venues and so on.
Right.
So I, I think you'll find that the support for this venue is forthcoming.
It's great. You know, and also with the hotel, you know, we expect to have another one hundred and forty-four rooms on the market by two thousand twenty. Again, Truro's approaching five hundred room nights. We would be, with, with fixed roof accommodations, we would be just under that. But then when you add BnBs and smaller lodging and Airbnbs, which are growing really quickly, I think we can handle that, that amount and it's great. We'll find a place for them.
Yes, because Acadian First Nations, they hope to be open in two thousand twenty, do they not? I think in June of two thousand twenty. So it's a good venue.
And I've been working with them as well. They're not, they're not part of the levy currently, but we're, we're in discussions with them about how they can be participants. And they've been very supportive in this event, with this event bid already. So I have a good relationship with them already. And so this is. good relationship with them already, and so, this is what we want to see, right?
Okay. Neil, again, thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Item number five, business arising from the minutes. Hearing, what's there? Item number six, the annual report by the Warden on activities of the municipality. Counselors, I have jotted down a few things that we've been working on, and doing in the municipality since our last annual meeting. I do want to touch on a couple of things. As you're all well aware, you're all sit on different committees, and organizations, and so on. You also have a lot of community venues that you participate in. Done a quick calculation in the back of my head, the majority of you councillors, without even you even realizing it, you are touching on, in the area of around 60 meetings, or 60 things that you do every year, that you don't even realize. Some of us do more, some of us do a few less, but on your community venues and so on, it's, you're in that area and more, and so on. So, on behalf of myself, and the residents of the municipality, I want to thank you for your dedication to fulfilling all of those requirements that have been required of you in the last year, and as you are all well aware, there's always challenges and so on. You have two venues on a Saturday, and they both overlap and so on, you try to get from one to the other, or they're both at the same time, but I do appreciate your time and effort, and your, also, your time that you dedicate to being an alternate on some of these committees, and so on, and you're called, you know, maybe just four hours, or six hours before the meeting, and you usually always make the commitment of being there for your fellow councillor. 2018, 2018-19's been a very busy year for the municipality. As you're all well aware, we hired our new CIO, Victoria Brooks, to give you a quick update. As we're all well aware, she gives us monthly reports, and those reports are quite lengthy, but she keeps us as the councillors, well up to date on what is happening within the municipality, that, for that month, and possibly for the next year, possibly the next two years, and for the next month, for sure. The committee that done the interviews of the candidates and so on, met multiple times, and so on. It was an easy decision when we finally get down to the last, to the last candidates, and so on, and I, at this time, Victoria, as this is our annual meeting, I want to welcome you aboard the municipality, and I think you've done an excellent job up to this point, so, to carry on the good work. A couple of things that we've been working on, that the council has been working on over the last number of years, our public works building, as we're all well aware, hopefully we will be going and having that accomplished this year. That's, again, through the diligent work of the CIO in the public works, and the Building Committee. Web.com, our heating, heating system and air conditioning system is 99% completed. That, again, was an accomplishment by the CIO, and Derek, and the Director of Finance, and I'm going to take it upon myself, and your Warden, we worked diligently, but they accomplished that, and it's just basically a few items that have to be tweaked on that. Our business park, as you're all well aware, we've had some concerns and so on, and as council, we instilled, again, upon the staff to try and do some things out there, to start initiating some interest in the business park. And last fall, we cleared roughly 23 acres of property, you've probably been out and had a look at that property, it's very impressive, and it looks good, and in discussions, we are going to try, and through our budgeting process this year, look at putting some money aside to do some work out there on testing, and so on, the quality of the soil, and the grounds, and so on, that we can put some lots up for sale. We do have interest, as you're well aware, through the CIO's report, there is interest in the park, but our CSC building that we've, in our park, which is an asset of the municipality, that has been leased at this time, there is multiple workers out there, so there's cars in the parking lot, and so on, and it's another tenant, which vastly improves the business park. We have been working very diligently with our partners, not just with the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of Argyle, but with Developed Nova Scotia, with Nova Scotia Business Inc. We have met with the Minister of Agriculture, Seafood and Aquaculture, a couple of times. We've been meeting with other ministers on different topics, and so on, that would help improve the municipality of Yarmouth's stake in Nova Scotia. Another item, airport, the Yarmouth International Airport. We have partnered for the last number of years with the town of Yarmouth, and with the municipality of Argyle. We are diligently always working to try to improve, and to work out some, I don't know what the word would be, but to work out a solution, I guess, would be the best term for the Yarmouth Airport. It is a vital link to southwest Nova, it is used, as we're all well aware, for search and rescue offshore, it is used by the military for practice flights, it is used by the RCMP, doctors, and so on, it is, it's used greatly, and, but it's not on a passenger service schedule, because there just isn't enough of us that want to fly to Halifax, and so on. But, the three partners are working diligently on that, and hopefully, in 1920, we'll have some conclusions on exactly which direction we're going. The ferry terminals, we're all well aware of, there was an announcement on the starting of the project at the Yarmouth Ferry Terminal, that is one that the municipality fully supports, it is a vital link for Nova Scotia and for the US, it brings a lot of tourists. Hopefully, this year, we'll see an influx of walk-ons, and be able to move forward from there. I know Counselor Allen represented the municipality on Friday, I made my apologies, as I had to be away in Halifax. I hope he enjoyed his time with politicians, and with the general public. One of the, one of the things that I've enjoyed this year has been working with AFN, and we are jointly looking at a transportation link between the town of Yarmouth, it's a trail, I call it a trail sidewalk, but we are trying to envision from Stars Road Corner to Arcadia Corner with a trail system sidewalk, and we're jointly looking at that with AFN and with TIR at this time. It is a project that's going to take some time, but it's a project that we're going to try to move forward. Pardon me? Yes, yes, with the town of Yarmouth, because part of the, part of the property is in the town of Yarmouth, part of it is owned by Acadian First Nations, and the last part is owned by the municipality of Yarmouth. Arcadia Sidewalk, we're going to do the finish, finish work on that, on the revitalization of that, it vastly improved the condition, and so on, but we do have some touch-up work to finish on that this spring, as it was a project that was started late in the fall, and we knew it had to be completed this spring. Again, that is only a few of the items that we're working on. Again, I want to thank you as councillors for doing your time and effort. In each and every one of these projects, there is many more, and as you're all well aware, there's going to be a few more that we're going to tackle this summer, or this year, and so on. But again, to the staff of the municipality of Yarmouth, the senior staff, and all of our other employees in recreation, public works, and so on, thank you very much for your time and dedication to the municipality, and for your concerns of moving us forward. And that is my report. Is there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number seven, which is annual reports, you have that in your, in your agenda. Going here, 7.1, Friends of the Yarmouth Light. 7.2, Planning Advisory Committee Annual Report, Deputy Warden, you have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Last night, I sat down, I was, obviously, as you all know, I've been away for a couple weeks, and I sat down, and one of the first things I wrote down is, "This year has not been particularly busy." Well, I figured it might be three quarters of a page, but ended up being two full pages. But, Planning Advisory Committee is one of the most important committees, in my opinion, that council does.
I agree.
It has to do with our municipal planning strategies and land use bylaws, and how it affects everybody across the municipality district of Yarmouth. So, I'm going to read this, this report verbatim, as I get it in front of me. So, "This year's not been particularly busy, unlike previous years. We have welcomed two new community representatives, Donald Smith and Patty Simpson. They have replaced the outgoing community representatives of Ann Jones and Tori Grimshaw. Richard Gray still serves as a community representative, however, his tenure is overdue, to be reappointed or replaced." So, that's something that we're going to have to think about in the next coming weeks, or next couple council meetings. "In the fall 2018, our senior planner Brad Fulton has retired, and I'd like to thank him for his decades of service to the municipality district of Yarmouth. Some of you may not know, he used to be our Development Officer for the municipality, but he just eventually moved into the Senior Planner for the District Planning Commission. His replacement is Maurice Lloyd, who also has many decades of experience, and we're very fortunate to have him. Also, new to the committee this year is our new CIO, Victoria Brooks. And one thing that I would like to note, is when we were considering Victoria for the position of CIO, she was very versed on our municipal planning strategy and land use bylaws, and also the municipal climate change adaptation plan, I think she knows them better than I do. The committee did not meet in April and May of 2018. On June 28, on June 26, 2018, the committee recommended to council to approve a rezoning from rural development to rural commercial on the Rose Road to enable the development and operation of an equestrian facility. We also discussed tiny homes and their issues related to them. One thing that should be noted about tiny homes, if they are built on wheels, building codes do not apply. If they are constructed as a permanent structure, they will have to meet the building codes and regulations as any single-family dwelling would. On July 20, on July 17, 2018, I was away, along with the Warden and Counselor Patty Durkey, which is very strange, however, Counselor Daniel Allen was nominated to chair the meeting at that time. The committee at that time also recommended that a 3.7 acre portion of land be rezoned from rural development to rural commercial on the Brooklyn Road to enable the development of an operation of a crematorium facility. An introduction and overview was given at the start, for the start of the subdivision bylaw review. Items include municipal road regulations, instruments of subdivision, and private roads. That work is continuing to this day, and is expected to go forward to a public hearing in June of this year. On July 31, 2018, we held a rare afternoon meeting to discuss the possible amendments to our subdivision bylaw. Discussion included stormwater plans, monitoring water, paving of public roads owned by the municipality, in regards to the cost sharing and instrument of subdivision. In September, October, November of 2018, there was no meetings. Also, in January and February 2019, there were no meetings. In March 19, 2019, we discussed the subdivision bylaw review in regards to the timeline and work program, policies and municipal planning strategies, issues to date, and the consultation program. We also reviewed a report sent to us from the town of Yarmouth, called the Bunkered Island Collard Report. Two weeks previous to that, I attended a PAC meeting in the town of Yarmouth, which I plan to, plan to continue to do, because there's a lot of things that's happening, sometimes with the town's waterfront development, that could also spill out into the municipality district of Yarmouth. The Collard Report was done free of charge by an engineering student as a project, and was also forwarded to council for future reference and possible collaboration. The problem that we're currently having with the Bunkers Island possible development, it is all currently 100% privately owned. Years ago, the municipality district of Yarmouth tried to purchase that land, and I do believe Counselor Durkey had also reached out to the, some of the landowners, to try to see if there's any way that we could possibly acquire or work on an agreement to develop that land. As Neil from YASTA was mentioning, that we have many great areas and stuff, since the town is doing a redevelopment of the waterfront, it would be a nice mesh between the municipality district of Yarmouth, that we could possibly extend the sidewalk and/or work on the trail system out there, to go and have something as simple as a look-a. I do believe the Collard Report is also linked to the municipality district of Yarmouth's website, and I encourage each and every one that may be watching this to go look at that, because there are some nice plans, and there's a lot of history in there that I didn't even know, that actually happened out there. So, moving forward from this point forward, Planning Advisory Committee, as I mentioned, is going to have possible public hearing meetings for our instrument of subdivision, and our subdivision bylaws, intently set for June, so, that's my report, Mr. Chair, and if there's any questions from council members, I'm pleased to be.
Any questions for the Deputy Warden on PAC? Hearing none, we'll move on to number three, which is Joint EMO Annual Report. You have that in your package, was, are there any questions or concerns with the report? Go ahead.
I just would like to add, for the record and for the viewers, Mr. Warden, that we are continuing to pursue regional emergency measures structure with the municipality of Argyle and the town of Yarmouth, and those discussions are ongoing, so hopefully, we can wrap that file up this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Item number four, Senior Safety, you also have that in your package, and my only question at this time would be, I'm not sure, have we hired a new safety coordinator, senior safety?
We do, and she actually will be starting next week, so, Ashley Rhino will be our new senior safety coordinator. She is working with Doris and the RCMP now on the security checks, so, individuals will begin to see her face around with Doris in the coming weeks, as she does her orientation and training.
Counselor Christian?
Yes, the senior safety coordinator, you know, the proper time to speak of it or not, I believe that is a very, a very important and vital position that we have in our, in our municipality. I've seen experience in my district, there, it's been very useful, and certainly has helped some seniors in my district. I just can't get over how important it is, it's just, it's just a wonderful thing, and I'm glad we've got somebody to replace Doris, and I'm sure Ashley will do a good job of it.
Thank you. For those of us that, and I believe Counselor Trevor Cunningham said on council, when we originally, and the Deputy Warden, when we, this municipality originally started with their, looking at senior safety coordinator, and I can remember when Staff Sergeant Le Quo from our rural detachment came in and made a presentation to council, and at that time, we really debated long and hard, and we were thinking, if I remember right, Deputy Warden only was a part-time, like we figured, for six months to try it, and so on, and we didn't have to go six months to know that this was a great opportunity for the municipality, and so on, and Doris has done an excellent job, and I'm quite confident that Ashley will carry on that tradition, because I believe- that tradition, because I believe of any feathers in the municipality's hat, that would be one. I think that was a proper step forward and so on. Item number five is the SPCA Annual Report. You also have that in your package. Any questions? 7.6 is the Waste Check Annual Report. I will, as you're all well aware, we do have a new Minister of Environment, and that's Gordon Wilson, DMLA from Digby Clare area. 7.7, Western Counties Regional Library. Any questions? Item number eight, YASTA's Annual Report. 7.9, the YMCA Annual Report. 7.10, Yarmouth Fire Department Annual Report, Incident Calls. Was there any questions or concerns on any of that report? At this time, I'll direct one. I know it doesn't deal with the annual report, but to the CAO, we're moving forward with an agreement with the town and so on at this time, still?
Yes, we are. The CAO for the town of Yarmouth and myself have had a couple of conversations around the process that we'll use, because as council may remember, we have an informal arrangement, and the CAO for the town of Yarmouth and myself want to formalize the arrangement. So we've had some conversations about what the process will look like to do that, and it will take the better part of this fiscal year to do that.
Okay. I'm not sure, I'm going to direct this through the deputy warden to the CAO, is I've been out and around a little bit, and I've talked to a few of the fire chiefs from the different districts, and I believe that they, the fire chiefs, would like to sit down with the municipality and have a discussion. Is that, go ahead, Deputy Warden.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct. I've been in contact with a few of the fire chiefs of the municipality district of Yarmouth through the Mutual Aid Society, which I attend now on a regular basis, not as an appointed member from council, but as a community representative. And I believe that a lot of their concerns that they have need to be forwarded to council. So what I had suggested is that we set up a meeting from the fire chiefs of the municipality district of Yarmouth and discuss some of the concerns. Some of the concerns that I can point out is community service boundaries. Some of those, some fire chiefs do believe that it should be reworked. It also is community-based for whatever type of fire service they would like. There is some discrepancies in the response time, just the way that the boundaries are drawn, but that's something that needs reviewed, and they will bring it forward to us at a future date. And I'll bring it forward to the next Mutual Aid Society meeting, which I believe is held next month.
Okay, on mutual aid, would it be an opportunity for, I realize I'm not saying that that would be the meeting that we would want to have, but could the CAO or myself attend those, do you know?
Oh, absolutely. Those meetings are open to the public.
Could you keep us abreast of when that possibly would be? So we, you know, I mean, if our time schedules would allow it, I think it might be an opportunity for us, because in my discussions and so on, they don't have any concerns with the dispatch, but they have some items they would like dispatch to possibly look at to make some improvements?
I cannot speak for society. There has been a few small issues, but every meeting that I've attended since Digby Dispatch has attended with different dispatchers, I can't remember the guy's name that was, gave the presentation to council.
Bruce. Bruce Snell.
Yes, Bruce Snell was there, along with one of the dispatchers, and he was bringing a different dispatcher at the time he was there, so, and they were expressing concerns like that, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely, as soon as I find out the date of the next meeting, I'll certainly let you know.
Okay, thank you very much. 7.11, Yarmouth International Airport Board, you had that in your package, gave an overview of where the airport's at at this time and our go-forward position. 7.12, Yarmouth Recreation Annual Report, you had that also in your package. They keep very active and so on. It should be also noted that John Darcy has 25, I think it was 25 years, 25 years of service and so on. And believe it or not, John, I shouldn't say believe it or not, John has been an excellent person for recreation, because when we had the old-timers baseball here, and I had the opportunity to partake either in their opening or their closing, or just going to, the one comment that I had more than any other was they could not believe the condition of the fields. They were above and beyond anything that they had ever played on before. And a lot of them came back the second time when we had them here because of the condition of the fields. They just felt they were such professionally looked after. And that's due to John. He really takes pride in what he does. But I'll take this opportunity again to thank John for all of his work and all the staff at Recreation, and for his commitment over the last 25 years from when he first started to where he's at now. 7.13 is Mariner Centre Report, you had that in your package. And our new member on there is councillor Daniel Allen. And you've been to, what, two or three meetings so far? Yeah. And so on. And hopefully, we're working on the proposed Mariner Centre expansion at this time. We have a meeting this Friday, yeah, this Friday. And they're keeping us very actively involved, but that's the name of the game. 7.14, the Lake George Watershed Protection Committee, you had that in your package and so on. That was formed way back, I'm trying to think, it's been a long time ago. And they kind of stay on top of things. The town has commitments out there along that area where they maintain. 7.15, Ferry Terminal Report, you also have that in your package. No questions or concerns?
If I could, Mr. Warden, I just want to point out for the benefit of readers, the CAO for the town of Yarmouth submitted this report to us, and it's a bit of a new format for reporting on capital projects. And I just want to point out for the benefit of readers, at the top of each section, so for example, overall status or scope or schedule, there's a colored bar. And if that bar is green, that means everything is going according to plan and budget. So it just helps a reader at a quick glance follow along with respect to the project. It's very well laid out. The budget is in there, the components of the project are in there. And just as a reminder, our Director of Finance is representing our investment in that project on the steering committee.
Was there any other questions? The ferry service starts when June?
21.
June 21st? Yarmouth Area Industrial Commission, you have that in your package. One of the biggest things that I know the general public see is the DOMTAC's facility is, has been completely removed and so on. I would state that all the property between the two buildings has been sold, and whether there'll be some development on it in the near future, I can't say, because that's up to the private owners and so on. Everything else is going according to plan, and everything seems to be working out according to Greg's wishes.
If I could, Mr. Warden?
Go ahead.
I just would like to also point out that our Harbor South Medical Clinic has room for more practitioners. So individuals who are working very hard on our behalf on the doctor recruitment piece are aware of that, and we just want to make sure that all of our assets are highlighted. So anybody out there in cyberspace who's watching and listening, if you're a medical professional, we have room for you in Harbor South.
Oh, yeah. Was there any questions or anything that anybody, before we move on from the annual Moving on to item number eight, business. You have this in your package, 8.1, Approval of Temporary Borrowing Resolution. As you're well aware, this is a resolution that we do every year. It's just to allow staff, if we have to, it's already in place and so on. So I need somebody to move that resolution in a seconder. Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you. Are we allowed to do that in this meeting? Is it a meeting, the whole?
Yeah.
Okay. Just one correction, I noticed at the bottom, it says in whiteness thereof as opposed to witness.
I see it, yep. If I could, Mr. Warden, I'd just like to point out, the amount in the borrowing resolution is the same as last year. We don't foresee a need for that to be any greater than what it is. If something happens and we need to go into operating credit greater than this amount, it would be because a situation is taking place that council's well-versed in anyway, because we do not use operating credit for municipal operations.
Sure, I can make that motion.
Okay. Moved by councillor Durkey, seconded by councillor Cushing. Was there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you very much. Let me, oh, let me get up and do this. We need appointments of 8.2.1, auditors, and...
So, Mr. Warden, I recommend that we continue to appoint Grant Thornton as our auditors.
Can I have a, what is the wishes of council? You've heard the recommendation from your CAO, but I need a motion to appoint them. Been moved by councillor Cushing. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Seconded by councillor LeBlanc? Any further discussion on that?
Question on the motion.
Question being called. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried.
Mr. Warden, I recommend that we continue in our agreement with Jackard, Fraser, Nickerson for municipal solicitor, Raymond Jackard.
Is there, oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved by councillor LeBlanc. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Cushing. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question being called. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Thank you. And 8.2.3, municipal crier.
Mr. Warden, I recommend David Oly be appointed as our municipal crier.
Moved by the deputy warden. Do we have a seconder for that motion? Seconded by councillor Durkey. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question being called. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Contrary-minded, motion carried. Was there any further business of council at this time? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much.